So councillors, I opened the extraordinary council meeting on the first of June 2021 at 7:10pm. And councillors, tonight I'll be reading the prayer and the acknowledgement. Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings upon this council and to direct and prospate our deliberations on the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of people of Randwick and Australia. Amen. I would like to acknowledge that we're meeting on the land of the Bidjical and the Gadigal peoples who occupied the Sydney coast, being the traditional owners. On behalf of Randwick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respects to the elders, past and present, and to any Aboriginal people in attendance today. So councillors, do I have apologies? Councillor Mattson?
Apology for councillor Shuri, she's unable to attend tonight, not feeling well.
And councillor Roberts?
Apologies to councillor Singh and councillor Stavreinos, not feeling well either.
All those in favour say aye. Oh, sorry, do I have a mover? Sorry. Do I have a mover? Councillor Mattson? Seconded by councillor De Rocha. All those in favour say aye. All those against, declared that carried. Declarations of pecuniary and non-pecuniary interests. Councillor Disis?
Mr Mayor, I'd like to declare a non-significant pecuniary interest in CP3821. I know the speaker, Joe Gillies, very successful solicitor in Matreville, and also CP3721. I'd like to declare an interest, I have properties in Matreville. And CP3621, George and Rose are here. They'll be speaking on a matter, I know him, but I'll be voting on all these matters because it's a non-significant pecuniary interest.
Councillor Parker?
I have a non-significant, non-pecuniary interest, however, I will not be voting in the matter in relation to CP3621. The declaration is as per the previous declaration in the minutes.
The general manager quite correctly has pointed out to me, CP3721, I do have a pecuniary interest and I won't be voting on that matter. Is that the right one, the general manager? Thank you.
Councillor Ainges?
Yes, thanks, Mr Mayor. CP35/21, I won't be voting on that matter as my wife owns a property in the city of Randwick which is affected by the minimum allotment size. CP36/21, I will not be voting on this matter either, as I know a number of residents who have made requests for rezoning, and I will be leaving the room in that matter as well.
Any councillor Nielsen?
Thank you, Mayor. A non-significant, non-pecuniary interest in item CP3821, as I own a property in the heritage conservation area, but there are no changes proposed in this area. A non-significant, non-pecuniary interest in item CP3921, same reasons, thank you.
Any other councillors? Councillor?
Non-significant, non-pecuniary declaration in relation to CP35, just in relation to minimum lot sizes. I have an interest in a property that doesn't meet the threshold, but just as a matter of putting on the public record, I'll be voting in the matter. It's, I suppose it's close, but it doesn't, it's not. Close but no cigar. It's, so I'll just, I'll just make that declaration, but I'll vote on the matter. So I suppose, out of pure precaution, in case someone moves some radically lower lot size recommendation, I don't think that will happen, but I'll just indicate that, but I'll be voting on the matter.
Any further declarations? So I'll declare mine as CP38/21, non-pecuniary, non-significant, but I feel that I do know too many people in the heritage and I've fought for them not to be on the register, so I find that as a conflict of interest, so I won't be voting on the matter. So now we'll go to the addresses by the members of the public. Give a privacy warning that in respect to Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this meeting will be recorded for the purposes of clause 5.20-5.23 of the council's code of meeting practice. Audio/video recordings of this meeting are prohibited without permission. A person may be expelled from a meeting for using or having used an audio/video recorder without the express authority of the council. And this is an announcement to the speakers tonight. All members of the public addressing tonight's meeting have a maximum of three minutes in which to put their case forward. Presenters will be stopped within three minutes when that has expired and you may be granted an extra minute. Councillors may ask questions of presenters at the end of each public submission. And the first speaker is CP38/21, Randwick Competence of Planning Panel Proponent, Mr Joseph Giles, or Gillies, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillors? Good to go? All right, the re, pardon?
It's just that the mayor had to vacate the chamber and so the deputy mayor has to take his place. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr Giles. You have three minutes.
Fine. The, I'm here on behalf of my wife Sylvia by RJS, who lives at 32 Eastern Avenue, Kingsford. One of the properties identified for heritage listing. 32? 32 Eastern, yes. There's two properties in the area, 30 and 32 both identify. The technocrats would eat me for breakfast, so my opposition, on behalf of my wife, to the adoption of the plan of itself, not just my wife's property, is more to the point of what we're here for, which is community. Community is a word for together or be as one. When my wife bought this property in 1986, it wasn't listed, it used to be a doctor's surgery, and
I apologise for this. I apologise, sir. I just realised, noting the address the speaker is on, I do, I've got an interest in a property, it's very nearby. And I think on that basis, I should excuse myself from the meeting. So I'll be abstaining.
Clock stopped? Has the clock stopped? Thank you. Okay, so so what I'm saying, on behalf of my wife, is that this is not a community-based document. If you look at the wording, and I read it without the specific properties, it's almost adversarial. And I just wonder where this on page 76 of the report of staff, the community was invited to nominate places that may have potential heritage value. Why is it that the actual persons who own these properties weren't so invited? Because my wife wasn't. Then, page 76 goes on to say that 18 months ago, there were 281 valid nominations, and there was a rigorous review process which was undertaken. By whom? People involved? The people who lived in the houses? No. By people outside that area, probably staff. Then there was a first round review where 203 nominations were progressed, and a stage three process where 51 nominations were recommended. By whom? None of that.
A right extension, thank you.
During that time, there was no consultation with the people involved. That's not community. That is far from community. And the recommendations were made. Wouldn't it have been nice for every person on that 51-person list, property list, to send a letter to the council to say, I agree with this, I want this, this is good for the community, but no opportunity was given to do that. I think the process is not community. I think what should happen today is that the decision should be deferred so that the people who undertook this process, and they were, starting with David O'Killy, and the other people on the on the plan, on the staff, Castaldi, should be should be given, sorry.
I'll give you one more minute.
Okay. They should be, they should be asked to go and see these people, these 51 people, whose homes are affected. Their homes are affected. If your home was affected by something which may diminish its value, wouldn't you like to be consulted personally? So what I'm saying is, I don't think it's ready. I think as an idea, Randwick needs it as a community, but the process, I think, has been flawed. And remember, this council successfully argued due process when they tried to amalgamate this council with another council. So what I'm saying is, let's undertake some process and see the people whose rights may be diminished by this process, and let's see what they say and maybe get their views. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Giles. Would you like to take some questions?
Oh, yes, if you would.
Councillor Andrews?
Mr Giles? Mr Gillies, I apologise. So no one's come out to your property?
No.
So how did you find out that your property was nominated for heritage?
One of the neighbours who's in, I think, number one, Winburne Avenue, told my wife that his property is also on the list, and that alerted her to it. And at that point, that was only about a week ago, and at that point, we started the investigation and we had a look at what was done and what wasn't done, and that's where we got to where we got to.
How long ago was that, sorry?
About a week.
Okay. And have you made any inquiries with council since finding out?
Not in the last week. Not in the last week, except to find out that this meeting was on and that I had the opportunity to express my concerns. And if I might, I just had one other thing. You know, I'm not sure what the heritage policy says, but it would be nice if we encouraged people to have their properties listed, like give them some benefits, you know, help them out. Because some people can't afford it. I mean, oh, I say okay, but some people maybe can't afford it. Anyway, that's another story.
Would you like your property tonight to be removed from that list?
Well, I think, I think all the properties on the list, all the people who own them, really have not been properly consulted. The 51 people I'm talking about. And I just think that maybe that the three people, there were three staff members who were involved in this. Castaldi is one, and I just can't pick up their names quickly, but what, they should all be visited. And you know what? You might get 49 people who say, yeah, I'm happy with that. Here's a letter of consent. Then what you have is community.
I'm going to move an amendment tonight, like I did at the last council meeting.
Councillor Andrews, do you have a question?
It's a question. Yeah, there's going to be a question at the end. I'm moving a motion, an amendment tonight, which I did at the last council meeting, asking about certain properties being taken off the list. Would you like your property to also be included in that list?
Not necessarily.
So you, you hope for your property to stay on the list?
Fine. My wife, my wife loves the property. She says no one should change it, but that's not the point. And I'm not speaking just for her, because there's David here, or Eddie here, who has a problem. And what I'm saying is, he alerted me to the process problem, and I think there is a process problem. If Randwick is to be a Randwick community, has to do things a bit better, I think, you know? If people don't want their property on, they should be consulted. They should be asked, they should be visited.
I asked that question because I'm going to move an amendment tonight. So you're happy for your property to stay on that list?
Yeah, it's fine.
Councillor Roberts?
My question is, can I just confirm, I think you answered it before, did any of these heritage professionals visit your property?
No.
When they made their assessment?
No, none of them. There's four of them, David and three others from the council, and none of them have, we have not seen them.
Were you given any opportunity to provide a submission to these heritage consultants on behalf of your property before they made their recommendation?
Well, in the last week, yes, because there's a process by which you can make a written submission with a PowerPoint, I understand. But I, we chose that I speak because it's
Well, that, I'm referring to a submission to the heritage consultant prior to them deciding. Were you given any opportunity to contribute to that?
No, no. If, for instance, Sylvia had been written a letter and said, look, this is what may happen to your property, do you want to make, do you want to make some submissions as to whether or not it should be listed? She would have taken the opportunity to do that. I mean, she used pretty harsh words to me. She said sneaky, underhanded, and lack of transparency. I don't think, I understand a little bit of council processes because I was on a paddle for Sutherland Council for many years, and I'm a little bit aware of how things happen. And it certainly isn't any of that, but I think sometimes staff lose sight of why we're here. We're a community, you know? We're communal. People have to be consulted.
It's a two-way street, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's a two-way street.
Well, sure, I understand, but my wife's done a lot for the community. You know, she does her bit.
With that in mind, if council, if someone moved a motion tonight to defer the heritage matter, pending perhaps a peer review or something like that, would you think that would be a good idea? Giving owners an opportunity to contribute before a final recommendation is made?
I would certainly, I would certainly support a consultation process with the 51 people whose properties are going to be significantly offended, affected by this order.
So a deferral, allowing owners to provide submissions to the heritage consultants before they do a final recommendation?
Except, you know, the problem with that councillor is that the consultants are technocrats. And if I look at their report, it's quite, you know, you know, justification for this, we get a chance to do this. It's really not community, you know? A deferral should occur so that the 51 people are given the opportunities to express their views about. And you know, do you know what councillor? They should be told specifically what effect a listing is going to have on their properties, what they can and can't do. Because I think if you talk to the 51 people, very few would know what effect a heritage listing has on their property and what they can do with it. And I would reckon that would be almost a breach of natural justice by not consulting with them on that basis, yes. Send someone out there.
The consequences and stakes are incredibly high and not being given an opportunity.
Quite a board. The councillor is entering clearly into debate.
I'm not having a
He's putting his opinion there, to the members in the public.
Councillor Roberts, do you have any further questions?
Yes, I do have one more, one final question. I'm just trying to think what it was. So I was interrupted. So thank you very much for coming tonight, I appreciate it. Actually, so I think I remember. Yes, okay, I remember now. So my personal view is heritage is important. And we need to protect heritage in our city.
And another point of debate.
So my question is So my question is, do you feel that there's a potential of these 51 properties listed that due to the, due to the issues of the process, that some of those heritage actually may not meet heritage thresholds and would be protected? meet heritage thresholds and would be protected, uh, you know, unnecessarily? Is that what you're saying?
Possibly, possibly, but the, the lack of proper consultation and information to the affected parties, they're, they're the things which is significant. That's what we have to do as a community, consult.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Councillor De Rocha.
Uh, hi sir, um, thanks for speaking. Are you aware that, um, this report by council at the moment is to go out for public consultation? It's not to actually make a decision?
No, I understand there's a gateway, it's, it's gotta go to planning environment, a gateway proposal, and then it goes out for public exhibition. But you know, I understand that. But isn't it better if it's flawed to fix it at the beginning? So that we're not arguing, you know, when it goes to the public servants, you know, and, and they look at it and all that, and then it comes back. And, you know, it's a big process. If we get it right now, we haven't got to worry later, you know? It'll be, it, it'll be adopted and there'll be no objections. But I do understand that it's gateway and that it, you can do, go further with it and make submissions when it's on exhibition and things like that. I understand that.
As, no, as long as you are aware, because one thing we don't want people to.
No.
What I'm led to believe at the moment is that this is a decision that's being made and there won't be any say. But you are aware that there will be a chance.
I, I am, I am. I am aware, but what I'm saying is, isn't it better to consult with the affected people now? So that what goes up is probably what's gonna be adopted?
Thank you, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr Gillies.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, second speaker. So now we have the second speaker, CP thirty-six slash twenty-one, Randwick Comprehensive Planning Panel Proposal Res zoning requests. Councillor Parker and Councillor Andrews. And speaking against is George Sussing.
Sorry, it's actually speaking for.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Not against.
Uh, can I just correct why you said that? Um, I think Joseph Gillies was, he was against? Okay, fine, sorry. I've got four on here. That's an extension of a minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, mayor and councillors. Uh, my name is George Sussing. I've been a resident of Randwick, counsel with my family for over forty years. I'm also the executive general manager for Group Property and Investments for the Simic Group. I can say with confidence that council's proposal does have strategic merit and should be supported. There have been huge infrastructure changes in the area. We have new hospitals up to nine storeys high in the hospital precinct. These buildings now dwarf the surrounding houses. The houses look totally out of character. The whole environment looks lopsided. These infrastructure changes will lead to a greater demand for housing. And the current zoning of these houses around these hospitals will not meet the increased demand. The areas identified for rezoning are close to essential services, shops and transport, all of which are within walking distance of each other, reducing the need for additional road traffic. As such, additional housing can be provided with minimal environmental impacts. The proposal also addresses the affordable housing needs in the area. We now have a new hospital precinct that needs more key workers who in turn need more affordable housing. This proposal provides a solution for this. The proposal also helps to meet the state government's dwelling targets. All in all, I think it's a very, very positive proposal. Councillors, over three years of council's planning has occurred to get to this point, over three years. By supporting this proposal, councillors will be helping our community move forward in a positive manner. Thank you.
Um, any questions? Would you like to take any questions, please? And.
Sure.
Look, I need to clarify. Can I just clarify that you're speaking on CP thirty-six slash twenty-one? Um, the Comprehensive Planning Panel Proposal Res zoning request? Or is it regarding the CP thirty-nine slash twenty-one Randwick Comprehensive Planning Proposal?
I don't know which one it is technically, but I do know it's, it's the properties, all the properties around the hospital, which is McGill Avenue, High Street.
Do you mind if I just change the number?
Absolutely. I, I, I didn't, I didn't, didn't know what was being put up, that's why.
It's, because we've separated into different blocks, so.
Sure.
So that's CP thirty-nine slash twenty-one. Um, I've just got to switch people over now.
That's fine, no problems at all.
So everyone can actually stay. Can you tell Dylan to come? Sorry.
That's okay, no problem.
They didn't need to leave. They can ask you questions now. So councillors, yeah, we're talking about CP thirty-one, thirty-nine slash twenty-one. So any questions? After all that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so councillors, we'll go straight into the items we had speakers on, so it's CP thirty-eight slash twenty-one. And myself and councillor Bowen will leave again.
Uh, we'll now move to CP thirty-eight twenty-one. Do I have a move on? And who's seconding? Um, councillor Mattson, would you like to speak?
Councillors, um, this is an opportunity now, as, uh, I think we just debated at the last meeting, of setting what will be of value and what will be remembered about the history of Randwick City Council. In terms of a list of heritage items which have been assessed. Uh, some have been recommended for inclusion as heritage items under the study, others have not. We are moving at this moment the ones that had the support of the current heritage study. Along with that are a number of changes or increases to, um, what is known as the heritage, um, conservation areas. Not so much specific properties, but areas that have a heritage, um, significant in their right. These have been supported by the community, uh, submissions have been collected. And I think, um, the proposal that before us, that is before us, is conservative to some extent. But I am confident that we, by using, applying that conservative standard, that we will have a correct, creditable and legitimate list of properties for which we will be able to justify future actions and assessments in terms of their future usages. What we do tonight, in the, uh, last months of this council's administration, is to set what this administration is about or was about in terms of conserving heritage items for the future.
Thank you councillor Mattson. Councillor De Rocha?
Uh, councillor Mattson said it all, thanks.
Councillor Andrews. Sorry, councillor Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I know we can get confused. Madam Deputy Mayor, sorry. Uh, I move an amendment. I think I've already emailed it. Have you got it yet, David? And my, my amendment is that, uh, council, uh, defer this matter to allow the owners of the proposed heritage properties to make submissions to the consultant. A revised report is then to be submitted in due course. Do I have a second?
Question.
That we defer the matter pending the opportunity for owners to make a submission to the heritage consultant.
Question. Through you, um, through.
So I'm, I'm speaking, so questions is.
Okay.
Well, I, I just wanted to get to the kernel of councillor Roberts amendments. Um, has, has there been an opportunity for the general public, including the owners of these properties, to put a, um, individual submission to the council, uh, as part of the heritage study?
Thank you. I'll put it through to the director of city planning.
Thank you, um, um, deputy mayor. Uh, the, the heritage study, um, was not publicly, um, notified to the, the owners of the, uh, potential listings of property and did not necessarily invite them to make submissions. Um, that is the purpose of the planning proposal going forward. And as part of that public exhibition process and council would, um, certainly, um, consult and, um, considering submissions arising.
Um, speaking to the amendment.
Councillor Roberts needs to continue, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So councillors, the reason I move this, uh, amendment is to ensure that we put forward, uh, the best possible, uh, proposition to the, to our, to the public. It's, it's, uh, it would be deficient of us to put forward a proposal that, that is, uh, that is, that is deficient and potentially been created, uh, through an unfair process. Now, I acknowledge that it's now going to public, uh, submissions, uh, but the horse is pretty much bolted after tonight. Uh, the, the ability to, to change is becoming much more diminished. And we need to have a sense of personal pride to put up, uh, propositions to our community that has had a lot of good, uh, decent due diligence, uh, that's gone into it. And there's some major issues about this heritage, uh, report, the way the, the report was, uh, allocated. Um, the, the main one is the owners were not, never given an opportunity to provide their input to the consultant. Uh, I find that extraordinary. They, they didn't even know that their property was being assessed, let alone being given an opportunity to provide their, their side of things if they felt their property, uh, was not worthy of heritage protection. Uh, that in itself is unfair. And we, we heard last week, I asked the question of the director, uh, were any of these properties, uh, actually visited in person by these consultants? And, uh, that did not happen. Most of these assessments were desktop assessments with no capacity for the owner. That is true. With no capacity, the owner, to make any submissions. And that's unfair, councillors. It is unfair, especially when the consequences are so profound for the owner. Especially when the concert, they said they may have gone there. That's what he said. I'm happy to, I'm happy to, so I'll.
Councillor De Rocha.
I'll happy, be happy to provide links from the YouTube meeting last week. So councillors, if, if you think that this, uh, this process is fair, then, uh, then, you know, I feel sorry for your, your, uh, decision-making process. This is clearly, uh, a flawed process. I've had concerns with it from the day, from the day dot. Uh, and now we're gonna put it onto public exhibition. We now have an opportunity with this amendment to, uh, make it right. Give these owners an opportunity to have their fair share, say their fair share. Uh, we need to protect heritage in this city, but we need to do it right. We can't just be throwing these people on the scrap heap with potentially, with potentially, uh, the situation where their properties actually don't stack up for heritage value. It's, uh, it'd be quite outrageous.
Councillor De Rocha and then to councillor Andrews.
If we go by this amendment, do we put at risk that, um, all, any of these, if not all, have the potential to be lost as heritage list?
I'll, I'll put it through to the director of city planning.
Um, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Mayor, um, as I understand, the, um, amendment is to, um, defer the matters and allow for, um, the owners of these properties to make submissions. Um, that would certainly, um, result in, um, the planning proposal sort of not going forward with these, um, recommended listing of properties. Um, and that if, um, those properties did not receive, uh, these planning proposals not received, um, gateway determination and go public on exhibition, then certainly there is less status for those properties. Uh, should, um, council, um, be considering interim conservation orders? Should they, um, be considered that they are in, uh, potential to be harmed?
Basically, that's risky considering that it is going up to consultation anyway. Yes, sorry.
I'll put it through to the director.
Thanks.
Thank you, um, Madam Deputy Mayor. Um, yeah, there is a risk of that, um, occurring, um, depending on individual circumstances. Um, and, um, yeah, it, each matter would have to be assessed on its own merits.
Uh, I had a question from councillor Nielsen.
Yeah, I guess my, uh, question was just to, um, follow on from what councillor De Rocha was saying, uh, was the question that, um, to clarify, please, um, director of city planning, that what we are approving tonight, sorry, the amendment that we are discussing at the moment would not allow, how can I word this? Sorry, you've, um, stolen my thoughts, mate.
Maybe I'll ask a question more.
While I'm thinking, thank you, no, no. Basically, I don't think that we need this amendment, that's my concern. And the reason that I'm asking for the lack of needing this amendment is the question to you, um, director of planning, that the houses, the property owners of the properties that have been identified do get a chance to then, at the present time, if everything goes forward, as per the recommendation on the business paper, they do get the chance to have their say then. When it's out on public consultation, it comes back to us as council and then we have the chance to rule either one way or another. That's correct, is it? Please?
Um, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Yes, that is correct. There will be a period of extensive consultation associated with the planning proposal and, uh, the consideration of these, um, uh, these potential heritage items. And yes, the decision, um, will ultimately be made by council as to whether, um, the, the plan is actually made with these, um, items or not.
So I had a question from councillor Roberts and then councillor Andrews and then councillor Mattson.
Uh, my question is, uh, can council at any time move to, uh, change the heritage, um, status of their city, um, moving forward?
Um, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Yes, it, it is a matter for council whether they seek to, um, uh, resolve to review the LEP, um, and amend its, um, heritage schedule, which includes the heritage items and conservation areas. Um, I, I do note though that in terms of the, the guidelines set by the department planning is that, um, certainly these reviews, um, should, um, occur, um, you know, within a period of five years. Um, so certainly this is a, a comprehensive LEP, one of the, the most comprehensive that, um, council has undertaken, um, um, in pretty much the last decade. So I think, would assume then that, um, once the LEP is made, that, um, much of the, the land use directions and, um, built form that is being visited through this, uh, this particular plan, um, would be largely settled.
Yeah, follow-up question. So I wasn't referring to the LEP. Obviously, the LEP does need to be revised fairly regularly, five years is, is good, I agree. But what I'm asking is, will this interrupt the LEP process if we defer this heritage only specific item?
No, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. If council, um, is of the view that they do not want to proceed with any changes to, um, its heritage, uh, its heritage properties within the city, then the decision would be to proceed with the planning proposal based on the other component parts that are presented to you tonight.
Thank you, and my final question is, uh do you, with these public submissions, if this heritage matter does go to public submission tonight, will the public submissions be returned to the heritage consultant professional for a revised report or not?
Thank you madam deputy mayor. At this stage, we have no ongoing commitment to provide any further assessments of these heritage properties through the consultant that undertook the report. Depending on the submissions that that come in and the volume, we will determine what resources are required at that time. And certainly through our procurement processes, council would need to seek quotes based on the value of work. And that that would be open to a number of consultants to undertake that work.
A question from councillor Mattson.
My final question, so the only opportunity for the for these owners to engage with this heritage consultant group is with this amendment basically?
Uh question from councillor Mattson. Councillor Andrews, then councillor De Souza, then councillor Mattson. Uh councillor De Souza.
Madam deputy mayor, today, the debate isn't just about heritage. It's actually about a democratic process. It's about a sense of community that's under threat. We heard Joe speak about the lack of consultation. One must ask ourselves, but for the grace of God, there goes I. If it was your home, made not of bricks and mortar, but of love and memories, if your home was under threat, how would you feel about it? That these poor individuals weren't even given the opportunity to show, to weigh it out, the scales of justice about why they weren't even told what, why the their house is heritage listed? Or their opportunity to say why it shouldn't be? I know all about due process. I was the victim of, I I often tell the story, if I was in the Labour Party, councillor Nielsen did everything she could to get me expelled. And she did the right thing and she wants to know the reason why, I'll tell her the reason why.
Point of order where you should withdraw those stupid remarks, thank you.
Well, they're not stupid, they're the truth, don't you?
I'll ask councillor De Souza to speak to the matter.
Sorry?
I'll ask councillor De Souza to withdraw those comments and speak to the item.
Certainly if the truth isn't going to be told, then I'll withdraw it. One has to be strong enough to accept the truth, but coming back to due process, well, I wasn't given that opportunity. I got a phone call from Michael Daly telling me on Monday morning that I was no longer a member of the Labour Party.
And so you're saying.
Councillor De Souza, please speak on the matter.
I am speaking on the matter.
You voted for me in the caucus room there.
You weren't capable of being the man, I stood up for the people around me, and I did the right thing, okay?
I accept the point of order, please speak on the matter.
I am speaking, who's now interjecting? Two councillors standing up, she hasn't even been asked to speak on the matter. It it it's her guilty conscience that speaks, not her mind or a, it's a guilty conscience.
Councillor De Souza, do you wish to speak on the matter?
I do wish to speak on the matter, you give me the opportunity. So I come, I speak about due process and someone being fair minded. Now it appears from the speaker that residents, particularly those on this list, haven't been given that opportunity. I heard the word due diligence used. You know, yes, maybe, we followed a process, but this was a process that was subjective and not objective. And I will be supporting the amendment, even though at the last meeting I voted for heritage, I support heritage. You know, I came to this chamber and I I said in my opening speech, where there is wrong, I'm going to right it. Where there's injustice, I'm going to correct it. And where there's suffering, I'm going to stop it. It appears all those boxes have been ticked here. Those fifty one or fifty seven families haven't been given a fair go. It compromises that sense of community that we talk about so often. I think councillor Roberts is right, I think this matter should be deferred. And opportunities to be given to those members whose houses are under threat to speak up. Now, a councillor's chairman, you yourself, deputy mayor, spoke about those people whose houses, it was compulsory acquisition when it came to hospital homes. This is by stealth compulsory acquisition. These people will not be able to do some of the things they want to do. So let's go back to the drawing board, let's do it right.
Councillor Mattson.
Um look, I I think the answers the director has given to the questions, especially to both councillor De Souza and councillor Roberts, pretty much lay out the picture. If we do defer this particular component of the comprehensive LEP, we run the risk of being, finding ourselves in a situation where what we put up on exhibition lacks any heritage study. We would lose the opportunity to have any of these items adopted. Look, we've been, I remember over the debates we've had on this over the last three or four years, councillors have told me again and again, councillor Mattson, you should wait to when we do the comprehensive LEP. Guess what? The comprehensive LEP that they've pointed to and talked about for all those years is now before us and suddenly they don't want to have a list of heritage items as part of the comprehensive LEP. You can't have it both ways. Well, with all respect councillors, I responded to the community that came forward with each of those. But each time I was told by a number of councillors, you should really wait for the comprehensive LEP. Now, if you now say that that process is invalid, you basically take away the credibility of the council in the eyes of everyone who came to those meetings and heard those promises, that the comprehensive LEP would be addressing heritage issues. If we now decide that we are not going to allow open and transparent debate via public exhibition and the receiving of submissions, it is as councillor De Roche has already pointed out. What are we saying? We're saying to all those people that had confidence that this council would put together a valid comprehensive assessment of potential heritage items and would do it at the appropriate time when they, we told the community we would be doing it. We would lose that respect. The heritage community around Randwick City Council would say what's going on. And as I said in my opening.
Councillor Mattson, that's five minutes, thank you. I had a question from councillor Hamilton.
Yes, thank you. I just would like to know that if this matter was deferred, will the owners of these properties be given the platform or the opportunity to actually submit their case to the heritage consultant?
I'll put the question to the director, thank you.
Thank you madam deputy mayor. If the the amendment becomes a resolution of council, then it does require council officers to to write to the individual owners and and to seek submissions in relation to the to those.
Yes, follow up question. So if this amendment enables the owners of these properties to put forward a submission, was was there an opportunity for them to do it before it was included in this list?
Thank you madam deputy mayor. As as we previously briefed councillors, that the planning proposal was the most appropriate time to offer the opportunity for these heritage, these potential heritage listed properties to engage with council through a consideration of the heritage value or not of these properties.
So is that a yes or no? So were they able to or were they not able to? I just.
The answer, or put another question.
Uh I'll I'll direct the question to the general manager, thank you.
Thank you madam deputy mayor. The the owners of these particular properties were notified of the potential heritage listing and explained the process by which council would be following, should have been endorsed to proceed as part of the planning proposal, that there would be a subsequent opportunity for public consultation and for council to consider any submissions.
Uh the general manager would like to make a clarification, I'll let the general manager speak.
Through you madam chair, I'd just like to clarify in regards to procedure tonight in regards to to the local environment plan. Because what we are hearing tonight is is a conversation around consultation on individual property matters. The the process of an LEP is one of the most extensive land use planning processes that a council will undertake. And in doing so, council needs to give consideration to the whole of community in making those decisions. Whether it be heritage or whether it be rezonings or whether it be changes to lot sizes, there will be advantages and disadvantages for individual residents as a result of plans put on exhibition. And that is why the process is that council first considers a recommendation and a draft LEP prior to putting it on to public exhibition. Because council does have to balance and weigh up the the individual advantages and disadvantages against the future of of the Randwick city. That, as I said, that includes both heritage and and zoning considerations.
Question. Thanks. Don't worry about expression. So I um thank you for clarifying that. And and what it does explain to us is that this is a process that ha- you know, is a is a known process, it runs its course, and there are many different events along the process, or many times along the process where there are consultation also.
Councillor Hamilton, would you like, do you have a question or would you like to go on the speakers list?
Okay, just. Unreal. Yeah, I know, this is just, so I'm gonna continue. Yeah, so basically, I'm I'm just trying to determine that this is a process, we're doing this fine. My question is, if we approve this amendment, so if this amendment goes through, is it effectively subverting that process? Because what we heard from the director of city planning is that if this is approved, then the residents will be able to put some submissions forward to the heritage consultant. So what I'm trying to determine is whether, basically, I'm trying to determine whether I vote for this or not, as everyone else is. And so if this is voted through, that to me sounds like we're gonna subvert this process and do something different to what we have done in the past. And is that the case? And if so, I think that will help me make a decision and maybe others as well.
Through you madam chair.
City planning.
That's right. Uh through through you madam chair, the the process of of public consultation for for the whole comprehensive LEP will be such that all residents will have the opportunity to make submission on on any matter that is in within the LEP, that includes heritage items. Should council receive a submission submission that warrants additional investigation in regards to a particular property, then council will consider doing that. And and a further report will go to council at the end of the submission period outlining all of those submissions, along with any other investigations that are undertaken.
Thank you. Councillor Parker, did you have a question or did you wish to speak? There's other speakers on the list.
I I do have, just as as it relates to the cost of council for engaging a heritage consultant to prepare this initial work before we make a decision as to whether or not we engage in a second consultant in order to do it again.
Uh to the director of city planning.
Thank you madam deputy mayor. The total cost of the the heritage consultant's report, which did involve reviewing over three hundred potential items, as well as the review of all our conservation areas, which was extensive piece of work, that was around eighty thousand dollars. A review based on submissions would be significantly less than that. We'll anticipate something in between ten to twenty thousand.
Did you have a follow on question? Uh councillor Andrews is on.
Um look, thank you madam deputy mayor. Look, I cannot support this particular amendment because what it effectively would result in is a situation where council would have a heritage report. There would then be a second heritage report. We would then consider the matter to put it on public exhibition, at which time it is very likely that owners would then procure their own heritage consultants in either to cherry pick either from the council one or from the secondary one in order to do it. Um I think that that would thoroughly confuse the matter. I think a more appropriate one would be for us to put it on public exhibition and then to allow owners the opportunity, if they see fit, to procure a heritage consultant of their own, so that we can weigh the balance of the two, rather than the confusion of potentially having three reports on the table and an additional incur of cost, the deferral of the consideration of this and it being stripped out of the planning proposal for us to come back at a later day.
Uh thank you councillor Andrews, a question from councillor Roberts.
So just to be absolutely clear, uh because I'm a little bit disappointed with the clarity of some of the answers. So to be absolutely clear, the heritage consultant that we engaged at the moment, there is no plan to engage them again to review submissions that come in from public consultation. It'll all be done in house, is that correct?
Thank you madam deputy mayor. As I said, I'm not able to answer that at the moment, the proposal will depend on the number of submissions and how we determine a best resource in terms of responding and reviewing the matters contained in those submissions. And as I've previously indicated, depending on the the amount of work that is required there, then certainly we would go through our procurement processes, seek quotes from various heritage consultants and undertake that work.
Councillor Andrews.
Yes, I mean, very patient, thank you. Look, I I support the amendment tonight because it's become apparent that a lot of our residents have not been consulted in relation to their matter, in relation to their property being put on the heritage items for the LEP. And, you know, this particular item, which forms part of the LEP, has been one of problems from the outset. You know, we had wrong letters going out to residents, telling them their house was gonna be put on the heritage register, a mistake by um by council. Those letters were withdrawn and then new letters were sent out. This has just been a hiccup after hiccup. And my my view and what I'm hearing from my residents is that they're not even aware that the matter was on tonight, and that we're not aware that the matter was on last week. And a lot of them are finding out, you know, from hearsay, from other people, that their property is gonna be heritage listed. We we cannot put this matter on public exhibition tonight. It's the wrong thing to do councillors, and I've been sitting here for a very long time and I've seen councillor Mattson fight tooth and comb over the years when his residents in Coogee weren't advised on particular matters before a matter goes on public exhibition. It's not what we do here in Randwick. We do things the proper way and the right way. We do things the proper way and the right way. We allow our residents to be consulted. Our residents have not been consulted on this particular matter. I have residents crying on the phone to me today, you know, haven't slept for days because they've just found out that Randwick City Council's got a heritage list on their property. It does not matter if it's going on public exhibition. It should not go on public exhibition, we're not ready. It's not ready to go on public exhibition. This is premature action by this council to put this matter on exhibition without consultation. Councillor Roberts is 100% correct here. There's been no proper consultation. It's been a stuff-up after stuff-up, wrong letters going out. Residents can't get through to council officers, you know. There's been a number of things. I've received endless phone calls from residents who cannot get through. Emails have not been responded to. Things are not being done properly. This matter is a great concern to me because there's been no proper consultation, no procedural fairness, no natural justice. When a resident cannot ring a council and get through because they want to know what's going on with this particular matter, and there's no one here tonight. Where is everybody? We've got 57 matters on a heritage, there's no one here because they don't know about it. No one knows about it.
A question from councillor Mattson.
Stand up for him, mate.
Councillor, a question through you to the director. I note there are quite a few reports before us in which we plan to change the size of lots, the zonings of some areas, the maximum size at which a lot can be subdivided. Are we going to write to the owners of every single property that will be affected, asking for their individual permission to put their particular lot on public exhibition? It's the same financial impact on each of those properties. Question.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor, no.
I'll now put the amendment as moved by councillor Roberts, seconded by councillor Andrews. We'll go straight to a division. All those in favour say aye of the amendment. All those in favour of the amendment, raise your hand. Councillor Andrews, councillor Roberts and councillor De Souza. All those against the amendment, councillor Hamilton, councillor Nielsen, councillor Luxford, councillor Parker, councillor Mattson, councillor De Rocha and the deputy mayor. I declare that lost.
Move an amendment.
Councillor Andrews.
I move an amendment about the following, I move the recommendation on the business paper, however, I move that the following properties be removed as heritage items. If I can get that put up, please. I'm happy to read them as well. 5 Savoon Street, Maribor, 10 Broome Street, Maribor, 43 Broome Street, Maribor, 51 Doncaster Avenue, Kensington, 41 to 43 Coyoga Street, Maribor, 237 to 245 Maribor Road, Maribor, 27 the Corso, Maribor, 21 Baden Street, Coogee, 20 Ilberforth Avenue, Kensington, 11 and 13 Abbessford Street, Kensington, and 24 Eastern Avenue, Kensington. That's the late edition, I have that on the list, which is 24 Eastern Avenue, Kensington.
Is there a second, though?
As previously advised by this council, I do not wish these properties to be put on the heritage as heritage items for the forthcoming LEP. These properties do not warrant a heritage item. And as was said before, heritage is subjective. If the resident does not want their property to be put on a heritage register, then it shouldn't be put on. So I'm moving that those properties be removed from the heritage register and not proceed.
Are these the same properties that you put forward last time?
That's correct.
Well, isn't a question to whoever, the general manager, whoever answers these questions in terms of property. If this is the same as was moved by councillor Andrews at last week's meeting and was lost, is he allowed to move the same thing?
Through you, Madam Chair, I'm just quickly confirming with the Code of Meeting Practice in regards to the timing of that.
Can I just put you out of your misery and say that there is one additional property that you have named tonight? And I don't think on the amendment that you put forward last week's meeting, councillor Andrews, if I'm correct, looking at the minutes from last time round, last week's meeting? Exactly, yeah, so that's the only additional... Well, that's, yeah, I'm quite sure that was strategic, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair. Through you, Madam Chair, the relevant clause in the Code of Meeting Practice is 17.7. If a motion to alter or rescind a resolution has been lost, or if a motion which has the same effect as a previously lost motion is lost, no similar motion may be brought forward within three months of the meeting which it was lost. The clause may not be evaded by substituting a motion differently worded, but in principle the same. I would suggest that the amendment that you're moving is substantially the same.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the relevant officer. I'm just curious as to the deliberate deprivation of quorum as it relates to the code of conduct.
Through you, Madam Chair, without looking at the relevant clause of the code of conduct, there would be a code of conduct issue with deliberately leaving the room in order to remove the quorum.
I would suggest that you pause the meeting for five minutes. Councillors, we're going to pause the meeting, we'll adjourn, thank you. Five minutes.
We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately five minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately five minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately four minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately four minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately three minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately three minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately two minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately two minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately one minute. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return shortly. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately five minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately five minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately four minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately four minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately three minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately three minutes. We are currently taking a break.
Councillors, I apologise, I've made an error in regards to clause seventeen point seven. The interpretation was that if a motion has the same effect as a previously lost, lost motion, no similar motion may be brought forward, but the actual clause is that a previously lost motion would have to be lost again before a, before the matter can be brought forward within three months. So, Madam Chair, I would suggest that we go back to the amendment and, and vote on the amendment.
Speaking on the amendment.
Yeah, I'll call a division to put the matter. All those in favour say aye. All those in favour raise your hand. Councillor Hamilton, Councillor Andrews, Councillor Parker, Councillor Roberts, Councillor De Souza, all those against? All those in favour of putting the amendment? All those in fa- I'm just, we're voting on whether to put the amendment. That's what you- Councillor Nielsen moved that we put the amendment and I believe Councillor Hamilton seconded it, so we're voting on it with a division. All those in favour of putting the amendment? It was moved. Councillor Hamilton. Councillor Andrews. I'm going to clarify with the General Manager, my understanding was that Councillor Nielsen moved that we put the amendment and Councillor Hamilton seconded it. Is that what we have in the minutes?
Through Madam Chair, what we are moving is simply that the amendment be put, no division is required if, if we can just show hands and, and put the mo-
I declare that carried. So we are now putting the amendment as moved by Councillor Andrews and seconded by Councillor Roberts, we'll go straight to a vision, a division. All those in favour of the amendment, raise your right, raise your hand, Councillor Hamilton, Councillor Parker, Councillor Andrews, Councillor Roberts, Councillor De Souza. All those against? Councillor Nielsen, Councillor Luxford, Councillor Mattson, Councillor De Rocha and the Deputy Mayor. I declare the amendment. Lost. Yes. That's correct. I'm using my casting vote to vote against the amendment.
Speaking to the motion-
Councillor Mattson.
Look, I think we've exhausted all the issues that could be put here. It's been a long process over many years now. I don't think there's much more that can be said. If we do not pass this, we will let down the community in the sense that a promised component of the comprehensive LEP, a list of heritage items and a list of adjustments to heritage area, conservation areas will not go up for public exhibition as we have promised the community they would.
I'll now put the motion, all those, and we'll go straight to a division. Our Councillor Mattson was, I believe was- Councillors, Councillor Mattson spoke to the motion in the first instance, therefore he has now concluded the debate and we are going to the vote. We're calling a division, all those in favour of the motion as moved by Councillor Mattson and seconded by Councillor De Rocha, Councillor Hamilton, Councillor Nielsen, Councillor Luxford, Councillor Parker, Councillor Mattson, Councillor Roberts, Councillor De Rocha, Councillor De Souza and the Deputy Mayor. All those against? Councillor Andrews. I declare the motion carried.
Okay, Councillors, so we go to CP thirty six slash twenty one. Ramy comprehensive planning proposal resounding requests. Sorry, thirty six twenty one.
I have a question, sorry, can I have a question regarding? Yeah, I have a question regarding to what, according to the numbers of speakers in terms of, you know, going sequentially, we would go to item CP thirty nine-
I'll just go to the General Manager because you're-
Twenty one, yeah, and my question was whether, well, I guess my question is, does it make more logical sense for us to go in the numerical order according to the reports and save CP thirty nine twenty one till the, the last?
Through you, Mr Chair, that is correct because the, the consolidated local environment plan has been broken into sections for the purposes of allowing the management of conflicts of interest. Item CP thirty nine slash twenty one is the residual report which should be at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
So CP thirty six slash twenty one, who have you got? So that's Councillor Parker and Councillor Andrews. Oh, sorry, I've-
Mr Mayor.
See, on CP thirty five slash twenty one.
Mr Mayor, challenge.
CP thirty five slash twenty one. Which is Anthony.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Yep, Councillor Parker.
Thank you, I move this in an amended fashion. It has been circulated there. What the, it moves in an amended fashion is it removes point B and changes the first bullet point, reducing the minimum lot size for all land zoned R2, low density residential zone from four hundred square metres to two hundred and seventy, seventy-five square metres, changing that to three hundred and twenty-five square metres with the exception of land within a heritage conservation zone. The second bullet point, increasing the minimum development lot size control for dual occupancy attached from four hundred and fifty square metres to, from five fifty to, and changing that to six hundred and fifty square metres in the R2 low density residential zone and changing the third bullet point to read, make consequential amendments to the sliding scale FSR to reflect the above changes. Thank you, Mr Mayor, I move the following motion in-
And it's Councillor Luxford is seconded. Yep.
Oh, yeah, I reserve my right to speak. Oh, sorry.
That's what was circulated. So just bringing in line with the housing strategy. We're good to go? Okay, thank, thank you, Mr Mayor, I move the motion in an amended fashion. What it does is bring in line the low density residential zone with that which was outlined in the local housing strategy and which was put in public exhibition. It was the, the minimum lot size which was actually put to the community and justified in terms of us making changes to our, to our subsequent documents. The five fifty figure and the two seventy-five figure at no point to date have gone to any public consultation, I've yet to see a compelling public policy argument for it, except for the triggering of significantly more housing across our city, in particular duplex housing. Looking at the significant pop-up of this type of housing already under the current controls, I am extremely loath to increase that development and pour fuel on the fire. It would lead to a significant change in the built form of our city. I think that the, the proposed motion in an amended form is a reasonable middle ground, noting that it already is a significant reduction in the minimum lot size. I would further add that all of the compelling urgency around the company title issue have now been resolved. Any subsequent requests at that point would then be related to the potential windfall for the development of a duplex in, in that particular area. So as such, I commend this particular recommendation, I do not support the recommendation on the business paper and it is in this form, which will be the only form where I will be voting for this particular proposal or the comprehensive planning proposal and until such a time I cannot support it, thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, to the Head of Planning, Mr Kiriaku. What was the recommendation that was put to the March meeting, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, the recommendation that was put to the March meeting was to reduce the minimum lot size down to five hundred and fifty square metres?
Just clarification, so the amendment is what was the officers' report? Or was this was what was passed at that meeting? Okay, so let me get it straight. So the recommendation, sorry, Mr Kiriaku, the recommendation from the officers, was that what we see up here as the amendment or was there a different proposal put forward by the council officers, could you please clarify?
Thank, thank you, Mr Mayor, and the council officers' recommendation is for a, a lower minimum lot size of five hundred and fifty square metres, which is contrary to the amendment being put tonight.
To Luxford, a second-
So, sorry, I'm sorry, my hearing's shot, I apologise, but, so- Yeah, what, well, what I'm asking then is, oh, don't worry about it.
Nielsen, are you asking a question or councillor, I just, okay, sorry.
A question through you to Councillor Parker. As I understand it from your address, this is to maintain consistency with a previous profile the council had on this issue, could you elaborate on that?
Thank you, Councillor Mattson. The housing strategy, which went through extensive community consultation, identified a six hundred and fifty square metre figure. Subsequently, council staff have decided that it should be five fifty. I agree with the original proposed six fifty which was outlined in the, in the local housing strategy and which came to council multiple times.
It's probably more of a follow-up to Councillor Nielsen. We, we resolved previously, can I confirm that we resolved previously to, to have this as a planning proposal and now it's just simply come back tonight in an, in an unamended form to what we previously resolved, to, to, to put it all together tonight, is that correct?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, yes, council had dealt with this on its twenty-third of March council meeting and resolved to proceed with the minimum lot size of five hundred square metres for a minimum, for attached occupancy and allow for that then, lots then to be subdiv- subdivided. Yes, it's now with council for incorporation and to be submitted to the Department of Planning for gateway determination.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to move an amendment, Councillors, back to the business paper if we want to move, maybe, would you like? Thank you. So Councillors, this, the amendment reflects the, the business paper?
Sorry, Councillor Roberts, you're seconding, yeah, okay, just, yeah, just, Mr Kelly, nice.
So I should have asked if you supported the amendment? I did hear you say you would not be supporting anything other than this when you spoke. So the, the amendment is actually the business paper and, and I note that the business paper is what council resolved in the March meeting after extensive public consultation and I now note that we are now voting to put this on public consultation. So there'll be plenty of opportunities for the community to say, hey, we think the minimum development size should be six fifty, not five fifty, or hey, we should, we think it should be three twenty-five, not two seventy-five. So the public will be given ample opportunity to do that. I think it's, it would be erroneous for us to change it at this point. Anyone in the public could do it, even the state member from Maruba could do it, you name it, anyone could have their say as to what the minimum lot size should be in, in our community. In the meantime, I, I commend this in its original form as per what we previously resolved. Thank you.
Councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, so, I, yeah, I support the recommendations on the business paper. We've just voted a paper based on seeking gateway determination to enable its public exhibition, so we've just voted for one paper to do exactly what we're asking this paper to do and so we are not trying to pervert the, the course of this, we're not trying to modify this, I think what we need to do is allow it to run its courses accordingly and to hear from the community as we have just voted for the heritage LEP.
Councillor De Rocha.
I, I support as per the business paper and not Councillor Parker's amendment. The five fifty was something that initially we all tried to put through and the, the lot number was actually, you know, a lot higher, but people since have always asked questions as to why it was so high, why not a five fifty metre square? And I just think that the business paper's exactly right, in March we voted for this, Councillor Parker, you supported the five fifty, I think we went around the table and everyone agreed that that would be, I think, the best thing going forward and I hope that we stick as per the business paper.
Thank you, Councillor De Rocha. Councillor De Souza.
Mr Mayor, this will be pivotal to your legacy to this council. You remember those one thirty families who you saved with Councillor De Rocha and my help? We saved those family and the joy it brought them, they were destined for bankruptcy because the banks pulled the rug from under them and refused to lend them money for their homes. Mr Mayor, you showed leadership then and hope you show leadership today. Now, the thing is, coming back to what Councillor Hamilton has said, you know, we have reports, we voted to follow a report, a report I didn't share, but I voted in the end for it. But the thing is that why do we, don't we trust our officers anymore? Have we stopped believing in those people that have run Randwick for such a long time? That have got that sense of community consolidated that has helped build this city into what it is? Let's not go backwards, let's go forwards, let us follow the report. I can't understand how one person can vote for something in March, April, May and a month later change their vote unless there's a political agenda, but I leave it at that. And in saying that, Mr Mayor- And in saying that, Mr. Mayor, councillor De Rocha, councillor De Rocha, the people's councillor has spoken. Mr. Mayor, your vote will be crucial. But don't let the community down, not just this time the South Ward community, but the all of Randwick. We boast about a sense of community. Let's tonight vote for it. And let's help those battlers who can't afford to live in the city. Help them to live next door to their parents. Help them to subdivide the land in a way where they can continue to live in the city. They can continue to look after their families and they can continue to be part of this community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Beech.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't be moved, I won't be voting in support of the amendment of the recommendation on the business papers. Councillors, some of the proposals we have here before, before us tonight represent a radical change in the character of our LGA. From West Ward to South Ward, if these proposals go through, we are going to see a radical change in the character. Every submission that I have seen has been in support of the current character of our neighbourhoods, of our suburbs. I have not seen a single submission, I have not received a single email or phone call from a resident saying, we want more development, we want more subdivision, we want more high-rise. It's been the exact opposite. What we have seen is residents getting in touch and saying, we love our coastal areas, we love our parks, we love our open space, uh, we love our mix, our sort of mix of grains of, of sort of older places, larger lot sizes. What we have at the moment, what we need is a balanced approach which sees, accommodates population growth across our city in a way that is fair and equitable, where it's not concentrated in, in certain wards, in certain suburbs, um, which will see extreme changes that I think are going to come as a real shock to people, to be quite honest. Councillors, Mr. Mayor, we know that at the moment, this population growth in Australia has dropped substantially. We are not getting any migration at the moment due to COVID nineteen and we don't really know when that is going to change. We are going in too fast and too hard and so the, the proposals that are on, uh, that we're debating tonight are going too far, in my view. I don't think they'll be supported by residents and I won't be supporting this amendment.
Councillor Mattson.
Um, I've thought about it. I'll be going with the recommendation on the business paper, but in saying that, I respect councillor Parker's right to put, uh, an opposing view and I respect his right to reassess, uh, his contribution to a resolution and change his position over a period of months. To say that he would have to be tied in forever to the March resolution would be to, um, put an inappropriate break on debate. So I, I support, um, I respect his right to put the amendment as he saw it. To my view, this is not so much a process in which you produce larger developments through consolidation of sites and, uh, building interest. It goes the other way. It's, uh, it aims at allowing the smaller family unit to be able to, um, have a property. Uh, yeah, um, so I, I hesitate to say that this is a pro-development position we're taking. It's not really. It's a pro-community one.
Uh, councillor Bowen.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, I'll also be supporting the recommendation. So the amendment, um, noting that it was what we actually voted on in, uh, just a few months ago. And also, um, I think the, the various controls and bearing in mind it is for, um, uh, dual occupancy. So that's not the same thing as duplexes. Um, so I, I think, uh, you know, we'd all like to leave, uh, you know, things in a pristine way. It's not going to happen. We're bound by the housing target. And this could be a way of producing, uh, lower-density housing. Because if we, if we put something up that the, um, the, uh, of, of the six fifty, it's effectively saying none and, and the number of blocks that would, um, uh, meet that requirement i- is very low. So I think if you want to preserve low-density, affordable housing that's accessible to people in the area, and of course, the protection of the character is, is through the heritage, um, requirements as well. So I, I, I think it's the right balance. Um, there's no point in putting something up that's not going to be accepted, um, on, on something like this. So I think five fifty is the right balance.
So councillors, I've put the amendment. All those in favour, say, oh, say aye. What do you need? Division on every? Division, okay. All those in favour, raise your right hand. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Bowen, councillor Roberts, councillor D'Souza and councillor, oh, sorry. Um, I'll start again. Councillor Ham, uh, in favour of the amendment. Yeah, sorry. Of the amendment. Which is the amendment. Yeah, that's right. So which is the recommendation for the business paper. Um, councillor, thank you. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Nielsen, councillor Bowen, councillor Mattson, councillor Roberts, councillor De Rocha, councillor D'Souza and the mayor. All those against? Councillor Nielsen, did you have your hand up before? Okay, councillor Beech, councillor Luxford and councillor Parker. So the amendment now becomes the motion. We'll just go straight into division on the motion. All those in favour, raise your right hand. Uh, councillor Hamilton, councillor Nielsen, councillor Bowen, councillor Mattson, councillor Roberts, councillor D'Souza, councillor De Rocha and the mayor. All those against? Councillor Beech, councillor Luxford and councillor Parker. I declare that carried. So now we go to CP thirty-six slash twenty-one, which is... No, sorry, no, next one. So now it's Anthony, councillor Roberts, sorry, you're still out and councillor Parker. So councillors, do I have someone who moves? Uh, CP thirty-six slash twenty-one, the rezoning request. Councillor Hamilton, councillor De Rocha has seconded it. Councillor Hamilton, would you like to speak on the matter?
I commend the team for this, um, report. We all know that a lot of work goes into all of these reports and this particular one has, um, really highlighted some key, key factors that we need to take into consideration. And so I commend the, the business paper and I hope that the rest of the councillors support it as per the recommendations.
Councillor De Rocha.
As per councillor Hamilton's just said, I too, um, credit council, uh, the people involved for the report that they've put here today and, um, great work.
Any further, councillor Beech?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I won't be able to support this motion, just consistent with my position on K to K. Um, I can't support further high-rise, uh, on Anzac Parade at one of those key sites. Well, there's two key sites, uh, on Anzac Parade in Kingsford and Kensington. Um, one of those is essentially going to remove, um, a laneway that was promised as part of the, the sort of, uh, you know, justification for K to K, that there would be laneways and so on. This is essentially going to remove that. It's going to go up from one metre to, I believe, by another thirty metres. Um, another, another site at the junction is going to go up twenty metres. People have been in touch with me. Uh, there's no facilities at that big interchange. Um, there's no toilets, there's no, uh, sort of amenity for people. They're using that massive interchange and this will be, uh, a, a, a really serious increase, twenty metres. Um, I haven't seen anything like that before, um, other than K to K. They would be the main two ones and so I cannot, uh, support this proposal.
Councillor Beech, any further comments, speeches? Okay, we'll put it. So all those in favour as per, yeah, need to raise your right hand, but all those in favour of the motion as per business paper, councillor Hamilton, councillor Nielsen, councillor Bowen, councillor Roberts, councillor De Rocha, councillor D'Souza and the mayor. All those against? Councillor Beech, councillor Luxford and councillor Mattson. So I declare that carried. So now we have CP thirty-seven slash twenty-one. I will bring the others back in. Councillor D'Souza, can you ask Mr. Councillor Parker to come back? Oh, wait till anyone's sitting down. So it's moved by councillor Parker. Do I have a second? Seconded councillor Andrews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the, uh, recommendation on the business paper. I think it gets the balance right in regards to, um, night-time activation, um, the reasonable preservation of business zoning, um, as well as, um, in relation to short-term rental accommodation, balancing the interests of homeowners as well as the needs of renters to actually be able to have, um, all year round, living in attractive areas of our city, um, rather than having, um, a transient rental, um, uh, market where, um, uh, renters are allowed to let in the winter months, only to be turfed out in the summer months. So I move the recommendation on the business paper. I'd further commend that particular ninety-day recommendation as it is subject to extensive, uh, work and study by our planners in that regard. So I commend, uh, the recommendation on the paper.
Thank you. Councillor Andrews has seconded. You, you, councillor Beech, question?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to get some clarification on that ninety days. Um, now, because this, uh, recommendation relates to, um, permissible uses without development consent, uh, will there still be, um, other short-term rental accommodation that is required? So will this be in addition or will there still be, um, other short-term accommodation at the hundred and twenty days or is this in essence, uh, reducing that wholesale for all of the, uh, short-term rental accommodation, all of it from one twenty to ninety?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this amendment, uh, sorry, this proposed, um, change in terms of the restriction on the amount of time that you can have an unhosted, um, property and, and have that provided for short-term rental accommodation is part of an overall framework that the state government is, is trying to introduce to provide some more controls, um, over this type of use. Um, it, what it does, the actual, um, days, it's a hundred and eighty days. I mean, I know that some recommendation or suggestion of the planning panel was perhaps a hundred and twenty days may provide a bal- balance, but, uh, what this effectively does in terms of reducing it down to ninety days, uh, it limits the ability for people to, um, provide that, this type of accommodation that would be normally, um, uh, provided for more long-term rental occupancy, um, and, um, allows that to be, uh, uh, provided for rather than being hosted for tourist or visitor accommodation. And it operates, um, with a number of other controls in terms of registration and code of conduct, um, and fire, um, safety regulations. So, um, this is the, there is no additional ability to, um, offer any other types of visitor accommodation in some zones, which they're, if they're zoned, um, that for low-density and prohibit service departments. So it's a matter for council to identify if the use is not being, um, uh, provided for in accordance with the permissible uses and will need to take action in that regard.
Councillor Nielsen.
A question, um, in relation to the planning panel's, um, advice where they said that, um, uh, council should be, uh, ensuring that the appropriate balance between visitor accommodation and rental, rental housing is achieved. Will we be, um, monitoring this in some way, please?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the panel's, um, recommendation was that perhaps a hundred and twenty days is a more reasonable timeframe. Um, and we're suggesting that the demands placed on our area, um, in terms of attractiveness to tourism and the like, that ninety days would be, um, in council's best interest.
Clarification though. The, the point that I'm trying to make, um, through, from the report, from the response from the planning panel is that are we as council, are we going to be monitoring to assure that there is appropriate balance between visitor accommodation and rental accommodation? I think what a lot of people in this area are very concerned about is the severe loss of rental accommodation because a lot of people just want to make the, um, major profits that they can renting out their place for a motza over the summer and they turf people out. So the point I thought that the panel was making, which I thought was a very reasonable one, that we need to ensure that there's an appropriate balance between this. And what my question to you is, as director of planning, is are we going to be putting in some mechanism to ensure that there is appropriate balance, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my understanding and interpretation of the panel's comments is they were suggesting that, um, the ninety days is too stringent and there should be more relaxation of that to allow balance towards more, uh, visitor and tourist accommodation. But in terms of our monitoring, um, yes, we will do that once the mechanisms are in place that the state government is providing in terms of registration and the like. And therefore we will be able to undertake inspections to determine whether these premises are being operated in accordance with these exempt development requirements.
Councillor Parker? Oh, sorry.
In relation to that comment from councillor Nielsen, um, I'd actually just like to add a point G, which is that council review, um, if accepted, the ninety-day limit, um, within three years of its operation. Um, look, I just, I, I close the debate. I commend it to the floor.
Andrews, councillor Bowen, councillor Mattson, councillor Roberts, councillor De Rocha and the mayor. So I declare that carried. To CP thirty-nine slash twenty-one and there's no one leaving the room. So someone to move, councillor Hamilton, councillor Roberts. So councillor Hamilton has moved.
Again, what I would say is that, um, the team on council have done a fantastic job of this and I fully support all the recommendations on the paper. There's no amendments for me because I think that what they've done is, is very comprehensive and I, um, implore all other councillors to fully support, um, all the recommendations untouched. Thanks.
Councillor Roberts has seconded.
Just like to echo those comments from councillor Hamilton and I'd just like to take the opportunity to, uh, more generally, uh, thank the staff and congratulate them for an excellent work. Over, over at least the last couple of years and, uh, it's obviously been ramping up in intensity in recent months. So, uh, I, I, we all recognise, uh, the work involved. So thank you very much for putting this forward tonight and keeping things on the rails, keeping things on track, uh, so we can move this forward and update the LEP. So with respect to this particular matter, I, I agree with councillor Hamilton. I hope, uh, is not amended. I support it as per the, the business paper. Thanks for your time. Thanks for your time.
The Parker and then councillor.
Through you, Mr Mayor, I just have a clarification as to the updated HIA proposal and whether or not the recommendation contained herein reflects the changed affordable housing contribution in the two housing investigation areas which we're briefed in, I'm just not clear on that.
Uh, thank you, Miss Mayor, yes it does.
Cheers. Yeah, no, I thought you had your hand up, sorry. Okay, councillor Nielsen.
Well, following on, another question actually, I'm not particularly happy with what we're putting forward in terms of the recommendation, in terms of heights, particularly in the housing investigation areas. And I'm sure we all remember that at the March meeting, it was resolved, point three, that council request a revised report containing the following, that there be a revising down of building heights and densities within the housing investigation area, HIAs. I don't think there has been any change. So has there been an investigation, that's one question, I have a follow up.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, as identified in the report, there has been analysis done in terms of the feasibility of reducing the heights and densities within housing investigation areas, whilst also at the same time trying to achieve a greater amount of affordable housing. And that, that's certainly not possible. The feasibility analysis that was undertaken determined a level by which would trigger development and allow for the yields and densities to occur to meet the housing targets within these particular areas. So that was not possible to revise down those heights and densities.
Well, I just want to have it on notice that I'm not happy with the fact that we have these increased heights, particularly in, and densities particularly in these areas. And that is the West Randwick HIA and the Kensington North HIA and the Arthur Street HIA. And I'm sure other councillors are disappointed about other areas, but I find that what we have proposed for those areas in terms of their increase is very, very detrimental to the residents of that area, so I just want that to be noted, thank you.
The Parker.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd like to propose an amendment to strike out part B of the recommendation, including I, two, three, four, so West Randwick, Kensington North HIA, Arthur Street HIA, McGill Street HIA, Kingsford South HIA. Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor, in light of the fact that there was a previous resolution of the council seeking to reduce the heights and the densities in the Kensington and Kingsford HIAs, I do understand that the recommendation came back with no recommended change. As such, I seek to strike out, contained in point B, the West Randwick HIA, Kensington North HIA, Arthur Street HIA, McGill Street HIA, Kingsford South HIA.
Amendment and councillor Luxford, do you want to speak on the amendment? You're the second of the, yeah, here's one.
So just speaking to this amendment, the fact that we asked for a review and a sufficient review was not returned to us, in my opinion. I concur with councillor Parker that we take these out for further investigation. Uh, and we re, we re-go these areas because West Ken, Kensington again is copying, the West Ward is being hammered, you know, and um, it's just too much. The residents don't want it, nobody wants it, we don't have adequate infrastructure to support any of this. So I would like it all to be re-investigated, thank you.
The amendment, councillor Anderson?
Speak against the amendment, Mr Mayor, I can't believe what I'm, what I'm seeing and hearing before my eyes. We've got a, we've got a recommendation here in respect to a comprehensive planning proposal for our LEP. And it makes sense, Mr Mayor, to, to have these areas which have been included. You know, we've got the light rail which was built to accommodate, like, Mr Mayor, I cannot be interrupted. You know, we've got the light rail, we've got the expansion of, of the hospital precinct. There is a need for greater accommodation in the area. And the areas that have been identified are areas which I think are suitable for future growth in our city. The message we're sending tonight by not supporting this particular application is telling Meriton, is sending the message to the regional planning panel that there should be further increase in heights down at Little Bay. This is what councillor Parker is telling council tonight. He would rather see higher densities in the south of our city which are congested. Areas where there's no infrastructure, councillor Parker and councillor Luxford are saying, increased density, south ward, south of our city, one road in, one road out, and no sufficient public transport. This is not the way to go. We've got a report before us tonight which makes it very clear where density and, and further heights should go. They should go near the light rail, near transport and at the edge of our city. So there's no congestion caused by people having to drive down to Little Bay where the density will come. This is where it's going to go. If, if as a council, we have got no leadership tonight to say, we don't want to, go ahead with this proposal tonight. The state government and the minister for planning will say, that's okay, I'll take the power. I will put it where, where we've got a proposal for a twenty-two storey tower down to Little Bay. Down to Little Bay, that's where it's going councillor, this is, this is what's going to happen. It's not about sharing the high rise. It's destroying the character of our area, let's leave Little Bay as it is. Let's put the density of our city where it should be, in the centre, accessible, wherever's transport, where the infrastructure is, not in the south. This is going to go to the south of our city, we've got Michael Daley out there campaigning that he doesn't want high rises down in South Ward. And, and here we are, we've got a count. We've got a staffer from his office who's saying the complete opposite.
Point of order, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, I, I won't, I won't be supporting this amendment. This, these housing investigation areas, I've frankly been quite impressed with the nuance and the research that's gone into it by, by the staff who've looked, looked all over the Randwick LGA. They've crawled through it every square inch and they've identified opportunities. And they've come back and then they've, and then they've looked at those opportunities and then they've asked themselves, all right, how can we, how can we do this in a, in a nuanced, balanced way? And, and as councillor Andrews was saying, these locations rightfully are located in, in appropriate areas, close to public transport, close to the light rail, and, and that's, that's reasonable. And we have to, we have to plan for the growth of our city. We have to, we, we have to, we have to have a plan for the growth. Otherwise, it happens by itself, happens haphazardly and bad outcomes happen. Uh, so this is a roadmap for future, future growth. Uh, the other, the other thing councils, I just really like to point out here is that all the proposals here apply to existing R three zones. So everything here applies to an existing R three zone or a business area. So it's not gobbling up, you know, low density areas. It's, it's doing a nuanced change to the existing R three zone, which is already medium density. So the effect on the neighbour, on the neighbourhood, on the community is minimal. It, it's a reasonable proposition, it, it's, it's something that as leaders of our community, we should support this.
So is that a question?
Oh, I think it's relevant to the subsequent debate, having listened to the debate, I've decided to drop the amendment and instead I'll be voting against the report.
Okay, so then I'll drop all the speakers. Now, I just want to clarify, councillor, that's and then we'll go to, so.
Quite happy to, if councillor Luxford is still happy to second the, the amendment that was put forward by councillor Parker, she could be the mover and I'm quite happy to be the second. Are you okay with that councillor Luxford?
Yeah, perhaps with an amendment taking out the McGill Street.
You want to keep that in?
Yeah. Is that what you want?
So you're saying you'll support this amendment as such, but you want to have McGill Street taken out? No, I'm asked. Yes, yeah, okay, well, I'm happy with that as a second. Okay, now, speaking again to this, well, I haven't spoken to this amendment before, but speaking to this amendment, the reason that I am so particularly annoyed about this is because not so much of the change of zoning, but to, it is not bizarre, it is the fact that a request was made to not, to come back with a reduction in the heights that was proposed originally by the HIAs when this was proposed to us. And when you look what was the, the existing height, for example, in West Randwick, which is, well, you know, where, well, it is, don't you councillor Hamilton? And the current height is twelve metres, so the proposed height under the recommendation is to go to twenty-four metres, well, that's quite a considerable difference. And what I am particularly concerned about is the fact that the residents in these nearby areas are very directly impacted by these changes. And as we said at our last council meeting, that the heights that were proposed in the HIAs were too high, I assumed we would have got back for our business meeting tonight, that there would have been some reduction. So for example, the West Randwick, I might have been, I thought, confronted with, instead of twelve metres, we come back to, it goes up to eighteen metres, that might be acceptable. But the point is that would be a reduction from what we have here, which is the twenty-four metres. So I feel very badly done by on behalf of the residents that there was not sufficient change to the HIAs. So I would recommend that none of these HIAs go forward with the recommendation for the current changes here. The heights remain the same.
So I'm going to go back to the same order when we have the original. So everyone will get to speak, but I've got you all written down, so councillor Hamilton, you were next, so I'll go in the order again.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, I'm speaking against this amendment because it's obvious that it's an amendment on the run and the original suggestion was to include McGill Street, now it's been taken out because what the proposers are hoping is that they can fudge the numbers basically and get the support. The reality is, the HIA is going to increase, it's a, like, it's a small number of dwellings, but by removing the HIA, what you're actually saying is that you're not in favour of housing that's going to support those that do not, are unable to afford the housing in our area. So you're saying that we're not going to allow people options, we're not going to allow people the opportunity to live in the area, to live close to the city where they work, where there's opportunities. So if you're not going to do that, what you're saying is you want to, what, make it an elitist area where it's so inaffordable that no one can move into the area? The HIA has been put in place so that we have options, opportunity, the whole business paper in fact has been pieced together through extensive research and extensive work from the team here on council. It's comprehensive, as I said before, and it takes into consideration all the needs of our existing residents and our future residents. And that's what we should be thinking about, not just you who lives in a house and you don't care about what anyone else needs, but think about the future and think about who else needs to live in this area and who should have a right to choose to live in this area and they should have options as well.
Question first, was that a question councillor Mattson? I know, I'll go to the question first, yeah.
Yeah, is there a?
Actually, I do have a question. Uh, question three. Thank you, question through you, Mr Mayor, to the director. If we take out four of these proposed HIAs, what does that do to the rest of recommendation B, which is addressing affordable housing contributions? I note under sub clause one under there that it refers to additional local provisions which identify, it refers to all five of the HIAs. If we drop all but one, what does, what ramifications does that have on our, what we thought would be the contributions we could, I guess, harvest?
Um, thank you, Mr Mayor, certainly the affordable contributions being based on the feasibility of the development proceeding and still being profitable enough to provide for that additional housing at the rate of either three percent or five percent in specific areas. If you remove four of those housing investigation areas, you, you would rely on one housing investigation area with a limited amount of affordable housing dwellings that could be contributed as part of the redevelopment there. I think there would be sort of a very small number, some twenty, I think, yeah.
So Roberts, I'll come back to you councillor, unless that's a question, it's councillor D'Souza. Yeah, no, it's a question?
Uh, if, if these HIAs are removed, will it affect our long term obligations to, you know, pull our weight in terms of Greater Metro Sydney, in terms of renewed dwellings? And are there risks the state potentially could, could come in and override if we don't pull our weight?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, yes, the reduction in the capacity for increased housing in these areas would result in a lesser number than we're currently trying to achieve in terms of the population growth and the housing targets for the six to ten year period. It's, it's a matter for the state government as to what approach they could take. But certainly, Mr Stakes has indicated previously, if councils aren't prepared to, to plan for future growth then, then the state has a role to play there. I'll just note also that in the report in relation to looking at the revised building heights and the suitability of these particular housing investigation areas, there are some other options that are provided to council in terms of looking at a general increase in density throughout its medium density zone or, or looking at some, some further changes to lot sizes. I also note that as per the previous council meeting on the twenty-third of March, another area which was identified for potential additional growth and providing for housing diversity through the diversity area, that was deleted from the planning proposal. And that has not appeared in this, in this part of the report.
Is there a question, councillor Nelson, with a question?
Uh, my question is, and I don't mean to be rude in the way that I'm asking this question, but because our resolution was that we wanted, council wanted a revising down of the building heights and densities within the housing, HIAs, sorry, within the HIAs. I don't know why, or would there have been a possibility that the council officers could have informed councillors that this was not going to be possible prior to this actual report being delivered to us last Thursday?
Thank, thank you, Mr Mayor, I think in the original report we provided to the council, we indicated what the, the triggers were in, in terms of those housing investigation areas that would provide for the redevelopment potential. And the assessment was at that time that these. And the assessment was at that time that these zones, they don't provide enough floor space or, or height to allow for the redevelopment. So that, that was pretty much determined at that stage. But it is council's officers' professional opinion that is provided to you. It's ultimately a matter for council if it decides that, you know, through a lower height, that it believes that that is more appropriate. But that would not mean that any developer would be relied upon and there would be no housing growth in these areas. But council officers have attempted to give you, provide you with some other options in terms of looking at more growth that's spread out more through your medium-density areas and looking at the possibility of lot sizes, which are consistent with the approaches that you've taken through the housing strategy and the local strategic planning statement.
With all due respect, that didn't really answer my question, the pertinent part of my question, I think, which was, why could we not have been given a little bit more notice of the fact that there were no, going to be no changes? I respect your professional advice. However, had we known with a little bit more time, we could have come back, perhaps. Well, I know you can look away and get a bit huffy. I take it back.
Thank you, councillor Mattson.
I, I respectfully apologise.
Councillor Nielsen?
Please expect my apology. Please expect my apologies. Please expect my, please, I apologise wholeheartedly. However, I go back to the question, which is, had we been given a little bit more notice, we could perhaps have refined our amendment a little bit more respectfully. So for example, we might be able to come back with a slight reduction that's sort of in one area, instead of it's six stories up a limit, it's five stories and, and whatever. So my question goes back, why could we not have been given a little bit more notice? And if the answer is it's impossible, well, that's impossible. But could you please just indicate to us why we were only given, well, I'm sorry, councillor Hamilton, how many days did you get? When did you get your report? When did we get it? I'm quite happy to.
No, just put the question, councillor Nielsen.
So can we have an answer, please?
Can the director answer the question?
Sorry, director, could you? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I, I do recall councillors that at a briefing, these issues were ventilated. And I thought I made it very clear that there was no potential to revise down those, those heights and to allow for development to occur in these areas.
Briefings are not supposed to be decision-making forums, are they?
Question? Putting it, do I have a seconder to put it? Councillor De Rocha, all those in favour of putting the amendment, say aye. Against, I declare that carried. So now we'll put it, we're putting the amendment as per Luxford Nielsen. So. It's going to the vote. It's going to the vote. Yeah, so it's been put and we're putting it. So we've got to raise our right hand because we need divisions on planning matters. So all those in favour of the amendment, please raise your right hand. Councillor Nielsen, councillor Veitch, councillor Luxford, councillor Parker, and councillor Bowen. All those against, please raise your right hand. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Andrews, councillor Mattson, Roberts, councillor De Rocha, councillor De Souza, and the mayor. So I declare that lost. So now we go back. So we go back to the original motion as per recommendation and we'll go straight to a division. All those for, raise your right hand, councillor. Are we going straight to the motion and as per the recommendation? Councillor Hamilton, councillor Robert, councillor Andrews, councillor Mattson, councillor Roberts, councillor De Rocha, councillor De Souza, and the mayor. All those against, councillor Nielsen, councillor Veitch, councillor Luxford, councillor Parker, and councillor Bowen. So I declare that carried. So councillors, it is now 9:35 and I declare the meeting closed.